Good evening. Welcome to the December 21st, 2016 Board of Education meeting. We've been in an executive session since 6:00 PM discussing personnel matters. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Do we have any participation in government students here this evening? Okay. We will have the meeting till 9:00 o'clock. At 9:00 o'clock, if the meeting's still going on, we'll take a break. You'll need to come up and sign out. There'll be sign-out sheets up here. And if you have a form that you need to have signed by the board members, we'll do that at that time for you. If we get done earlier, just come up at that time to do the sign-out and the signing. Tonight, we're here at Glenmont Elementary School. I'd like to thank the administration and staff here for hosting us. Several years ago, the board decided that we wanted to go around to each of the buildings within the district and hold one meeting a year at the various elementary, middle, and high school. So, thank you for hosting us. Do a great job, and we're looking forward to the presentation tonight. Introductions.
Christine Beck.
Charmee Wijdesinger.
Joanne Cunningham.
Dave Hurst.
Jody Monroe.
Matt Downey.
Lynn Lenhart.
Michael Cooper.
Jonathan Fishbein.
And Judy Kehoe.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the December 7th, 2016 regular board meeting.
Some move.
Second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The item carries. Student Senate report. Do we have a representative from the Student Senate with us this evening? Okay. If they happen to come in, we'll have them speak at that time. Superintendent's report. Ms. Monroe?
Thank you, Mr. Downey. Just one item. Across the district, we've had several initiatives to help those in need during the holiday season. This last weekend, we held our annual food drive. All of our buildings participated and collected food items. We also had many community donations and helped over 100 families. I'd like to thank Kathy Johnston and the Sess Department for organizing that. Also, our high school students collected toys and donated them to families in Albany County. And finally, we had many buildings and departments who also adopted families to help them during the holidays as well. I'd like to thank everyone who helped with all of these initiatives and also like to wish everyone a wonderful holiday season. That's it.
Short one? Good. Starting with the board. Starting for the board report. Last Wednesday morning, many of the board members and administration were able to meet with our legislators, Senator Breslin and Assemblywoman Fahey. I thought it was a very productive meeting. We relayed our concerns still in terms of foundation aid formula being addressed and the need to fully fund education in New York. They are fully supportive of that, though we do realize that, you know, as I said, I think the revenues are slightly down in the state and there are no new settlements or billion-dollar settlements that the state had received in the previous year. So, it's going to be a tough, tight budget season, I think, and we'll just need to stand by and watch and wait for the governor's budget to be released in January and then, as need be, advocate for our fair share. Anybody else want to add to that?
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to say we had two wonderful weekends of Shakespeare. I see a Shakespeare fairy in the audience here who did a great job, and the kids had a really good time. And it was an interesting production with a '60s vibe, and Joanne's daughter played a wonderful moon. But it was a good production, and those kids worked really hard, and I hope most of you got out to see it.
Yeah. I have to tag on to that because one of the things that -- this is only my second year of having a child in the Shakespeare production, but what is so amazing about it is it's almost like they are taking a course in Shakespearean plays and acting and stage acting. Mr. Yerah really does an unbelievable job with that program. I know he's done it for how many years now? Like 30?
Thirty.
Thirty?
A long time.
A long time.
Longer than Lin's been on the board.
A long, long time.
Wow. Is that possible?
You know, the kids, you saw a group of prior actors come back. He definitely establishes a strong bond with these young people. I know that many of them look back at working with him and point to that as a really pivotal artistic experience in their lives. I think he's hinted that, or more than hinted, that this is his last year. I sincerely hope it's not because he is a true gem in what he contributes. I mean, I just can't say enough about it. And the final comment is just the sort of, kind of eclectic group of students that are, you know, part of that is also pretty remarkable, where you have kids that, you know, play sports and kids that are musicians and kids who don't do a lot of activities, who find their presence on the stage. And it is truly a remarkable thing. I wrote him a little note just saying, you know, "This is yet another great thing that Bethlehem does that makes Bethlehem so special." But he alone, I think, has been really a pivotal kind of energy behind it. I hope he'll stick around, especially because we're putting resources into revamping the auditorium. I hope he'll stick around to see that and continue because it is truly a remarkable event. And I know many of you went, so you got to see it, but it's the whole thing that is just so unbelievably special.
Students do so well. I mean, the Shakespearean language is hard for them.
It's hard, yeah.
And they do such a great job with it.
Yeah. I have to say, I saw it like five times. So, the first performance, I kinda, and I can't believe I'm admitting this, but I will, I whispered to my husband, "I don't know this play. Like, what is going on?" You know, the kids, the kids not only embrace it, but they understand what the language is and stuff. By the end, I got it. But especially the '60s thing, it was really well done, but...
And it's one of the easier plays.
It's one of the easier plays. But yeah, it's remarkable how they can do that. I mean, I was sort of lost the first performance, I will admit.
And I think you said this, I think a lot of students, you know, may never have even been part of theater prior to this, and in high school, I think they feel very welcome into the group.
Really.
You know, you may come in as a junior or senior and, you know, have a great experience.
And there were many first-time seniors this year that were welcomed by the entire group, no matter if they had done one year, four years. It was very welcoming, and that's one of the very special things about the group. And there's also kids with special needs who participate on the tech side of it, and there's not many places where kids are embraced that way, and it's a nice atmosphere. That's why I come back and do it every year.
Charmee?
I know a select group of the girls' track team went down to Staten Island to race at the Ocean Breeze Park, which is apparently one of the fastest tracks in the country. And they were racing, they weren't necessarily racing these particular women, but they were racing on track with Olympians. So, they were very impressed. I want to just mention Coach Holly and Coach Ganzel took them out, and the Booster Club also assisted in funding them. I believe the boys are heading down there also, but allowing athletes at Bethlehem to compete in the same room with Olympians was just a lovely opportunity for them.
Good experience for them. Anyone else? No? Okay. Moving on. We have a presentation tonight. It's a, the Glenmont Elementary presentation is about RBC librarians, and I know we're looking forward to this.
Members of the Board of Education, administrators, parents, students, community members here, and also those who are watching at home. Good evening. We are pleased to host this meeting of the Board of Education here at Glenmont Elementary School. I'm Laura Heffernan, the principal, and tonight I'm joined here by our district librarians, who are all here, and they will introduce themselves when they each come up to speak for part of the presentation. Our topic tonight about RBC librarians will give you some insight into what our K-12 librarians do and the programs and offerings they provide. This topic relates to all three of our district's goals: knowledge, character, and value. Knowledge is pretty self-evident. Librarians work hard to teach students how to access, analyze, and interpret information of all kinds. RBC librarians also address character development in our students. Librarians are on the front lines of teaching topics such as plagiarizing, copyright infringement, and the safe and proper use of the Internet to help our students develop as digital citizens. And finally, value, in that the librarians work to provide the best value for the district when purchasing things like databases and sharing resources across the district and also across the Bosse's area. So, I will now turn the mic over to Mr. Detada.
You want to say it after a minute?
Sure. I need some support. Thank you. They're so nice. My name is Joel Detada. I'm a librarian here at Glenmont and over at Eagle, and I'm going to talk to you about some teaching that we do as librarians. We are certified educators, just like any other special area teacher, whether it's art, music, or PE. We all have our master's degrees. And just like any other classroom teacher from kindergarten all the way up to 12th grade, we are all certified New York State educators. And as a librarian, we have a great opportunity. We are able to see students for multiple years, which is great. In elementary, we teach them, you know, grades K through 5, and in middle school, you would see them 6 through 8, and high school from 9 through 12. So, this gives us opportunity as a teacher to cover a lot of ground. We are given the opportunity to collaborate with our classroom teachers as well, which is great, and it really brings us together as a school. We start with some simple skills in kindergarten, I listed some up there, like parts of a book or distinguishing the differences between fiction and nonfiction, and all the way to 12th grade, where we discuss different sources of information, online databases for research, and preparing our students for college. And an ever-growing part of our job really is using and really understanding new technology. As we all know, technology is going to continue to improve and grow, and as librarians, we are introducing new, different technology to our students as soon as we can, as soon as possible. A couple of us are already on the new computer science cabinet and a few of us around other different technology committees, and we have all participated in several different technology conferences and workshops. We understand that now, more than ever, that our youth really needs to be exposed to different technology skills. So far, with our students, we've covered several topics. Some include like online safety, especially with social media. We did our Hour of Code last week. We participated in how to analyze a website, whether, you know, it's true information or it's false information. We used a 3D printer. We used a lot of our online databases and downloading eBooks, and we've done a lot more as well, but I don't want to talk here for too long. So, we're going to, I'm going to introduce you to Sylvia Lilly, who's our wonderful middle school librarian. One of us.
One, one and a half. Hi, I'm Sylvia Lilly. I've been in the district for 12 years. I'm the senior librarian of this whole crew, and I'm at the middle school full-time these So, what I wanted to show you was a resource that we train our students on. Students are given an account for something called Noodle Tools. You probably remember doing works cited and how painful it was, whether that was on a collegiate level or as students in a high school or a middle school situation. Noodle Tools makes it so much easier for our kids that we really have been very positively impressed with what they produce with this tool. Hopefully, my link will work. No. So, this is something that all students have. They're set up with it, and, oh, it's on my screen. It's here, Sal, but it's not there. All right. So, now, but now I can't really, okay. So, we encourage students to use this. They can share a work cited, they can share note-taking, they can create an annotated bibliography. But essentially, what we do is we start them with the opening screen, which is where they open a project up. They can fill in as much of that information as necessary when they are obviously on a secondary level, what they're doing is slightly different than what they're doing in elementary school, but all of them, beginning at the end of elementary school, are using this. When I show you how easy this is, it's probably going to bother you. To create an entry for a work cited, students simply create a new citation by identifying what kind of material it is. And if it's something like a book, a template comes up, and they enter the necessary information, and it's formatted for them, which I'm sure all of you think is wonderful. What the students find even more amazing is that if they have the ISP N number for a book, they can just enter that 10 or 13-digit number here, and this database locates the material for them. They confirm that that is, in fact, what they're using, and all of the fields in the template are automatically filled in. Okay? Pretty wonderful.
So, much easier.
I know. It does bother me. We also teach them how to do note cards using this, which is a really wonderful tool for them. It, let's see. Where am I going to use my cursor? I'm on the wrong screen. You'd create a new note card, and it encourages them to immediately identify the source for the note card. If you all remember having to do your work cited card and then all your note cards and then draw a relationship between where you found the information and what the information is, this does that for them. As soon as they start writing a note card, it asks them where you got that information from. They've already made their work cited entry, they make the connection, and it's done. Somehow, I'm off the screen, Sal.
Just pretend that that's the center. Scroll to the right.
So, here is where they would identify where they got their material. It also teaches them note-taking skills because you know, if you've worked with students, whether they're your teacher or a parent, you know that one of the hugest problems these days is kids copying and pasting information from online sources. So, this gives them an opportunity to do a bit of a copy and paste by placing it in this box, and then the box to the right is where they take that information and they are then able to interpret it and put it in their own words. Yes?
Can I just ask one quick question?
Sure.
I saw that the style that you're using there is MLA style.
Yes.
Do they have multiple styles in this?
Well, in the district, we use MLA. You know, I know that on a college level, the APA is very popular for the hard sciences, but we instruct on MLA, and our style manual that we create is MLA-based, which I don't know if you've looked at the MLA recently, but it's been done over this year. It's an eighth edition, and it's completely different than it's ever been before. It's pretty intense.
Of course he knows it. I do academic editing, so I would love to send my authors back to you to learn how to use this program because I have to redo all their end notes. I just did a publication that I had to redo 350 end notes on.
Wow, you should be a librarian.
Just get this done.
So, this is, and the other thing that's been really great for teachers in the middle school that I've worked with is that students can share their projects with their teacher. It can be viewed online, notes can, comments can be made, and students can also collaborate with this. It's something that we are using and that your students are using as much as possible in our district. So, I should move on. We bring the cursor.
Just, yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristy Eldine, and I'm the librarian at Eagle Elementary and also at the high school, and I want to talk to you guys about collaboration, which Mr. Detada talked about a little bit. It's really important for us to collaborate, not only with our teachers and each other, but with other librarians in the Capital Region and also across the United States. So, one of the ways that we can do that is that we're members of many different organizations. I've listed a lot of them up there that we're members of, but a couple of the important ones are American Library Association, Capital Region Bosse's, and also the Eastern New York School Library Association. There's a lot of benefits to being members of these different organizations: professional development, conferences, workshops. I listed some of the different conference sessions that we can attend if we do go to a conference. Some of, this was actually one of the conferences back in May that a few of us attended, and one of the great sessions was independent research and the librarian's role in guided inquiry. And when we come back from these conferences, we share our information with each other, but we also share it with our teachers. With these organizations, you can also apply for scholarships, awards, and grants, but you can also network with different people and find out what's going on, what's new, what's trending, and you can stay up to date. We're also members of the Capital Region Bosse School Library System, and there's many districts and lots of librarians, and it's great for us to constantly be in contact with them to find out what they're doing in their schools and how we can improve. Being members of Bosse's, we are lucky enough to have their resources, including Noodle Tools is one of them. So, we have professional development, they offer workshops all the time that we can attend, and they have a great website for resource sharing. So, we have access to that, and we can look on there for Common Core, for Inquiry, lots of different things. We have access to their print and digital resources. We have access to their professional development collection, which is in print and as an eBook as well. We can use their Overdrive, which is their online eBook, so our students have access to that as well. And there are different book groups that they offer, so we can meet with librarians once a month and talk about different books. We also partner with the Bethlehem Public Library. They come in probably monthly, maybe more, to some libraries, and we do lots of fun things with them. We want the kids to know that they're an extension of us and that they should feel comfortable also going to the public library. And some of the things we've done with the public librarians is book talks, book clubs, summer reading, poetry writing, creative writing, 3D pens, 3D printer, Project Runway, and Fuse Beads. So, lots of fun things to get the kids involved. And Aunt Janie.
Hi, I'm Jamie Meyer. I work at Elsmere Elementary and the Middle School. So, when you think of a library, you probably think kind of traditionally of book selection. Too tall. So, kids come in, they select their books, and they have them out for a couple of weeks, and we do love this process. We love being able to place a really good book in a child's hands. A lot goes into our collection development. So, we, first of all, we read constantly. When I meet an adult and they ask what I do for a living, and I say, "I'm a librarian," they want a book recommendation immediately, and I have to say, "Oh, no, I don't read adult fiction. I have no time for that. All I read is juvenile and young adults. Sorry." But we all read constantly. We're reading reviews all the time, talking to one another, following online bloggers, visiting bookstores. So, an awful lot of thought goes into our book selection process, and it's a process that takes place throughout the year. It's not as if we can kind of decide on this in September and then that's it. At the same time that we're building up our collection, we also do something like, that's called weeding, just like you would do in the garden. So, we're removing titles that perhaps don't circulate at our school but may at another school. They might be in bad condition, they might not be current. So, we're constantly developing our collection that we offer the kids. We also all do all of the collection development for our eBooks as well. Laura, I think, will tell us more about that. But what good is a collection without a really strong patron base? So, libraries are in the awesome position of being able to work with every single person in their school building. So, we have developed a lot of programs. Some are as simple as a contest that's been sponsored by the library that every child can participate in, all the way to something like our One School, One Book program, where every single student and their families and our staff and faculty read the same book. And there are so many extension activities that take place around a program like this. There's daily trivia, online blog participation. This year at the middle school, we'll be reading a book called Chasing Spirit Bear, and our culminating activity will be a visit from Ben Michelson, the author, who will be traveling from Montana. So, it's a very exciting process, all of these programs that we offer. So, I think I have a few pictures. So, these are some examples of the school-wide programming that takes place. This is an author visit from Steve Schenkin, a nonfiction writer who visited last year. Here's an after-school program at the middle school where kids are using 3D pens. It was very well-attended. CAPR is children and parents enjoying reading that we do at the elementary school level. This was an open house that we held for faculty at the middle school. Here is another teen librarian from Bethlehem Public who's visiting us and handing out a book. Here's a book fair, student winning a contest at the middle school, and an interactive display that the whole student body was invited to participate in. So, and in the end, I think it all comes back to the books because the more energy that we can generate about the library, the more relationships we can develop with kids, the more, you know, the better chances we have to put a book in a kid's hands.
And as Jamie just explained, the librarians are helpful to all. Yes, our librarians are there to help our students each and every day, but they are also there for many other people. For example, the high school science teacher who just learned from the librarian about some great new biology videos that are available on the Discovery streaming database. Or the tech coach who is looking to bounce ideas around regarding new apps and how teachers can make best use of them in the classroom. Or the parent who is in search of assistance for how to access online books on the iPad at home using our BCSD Overdrive book collection. Or even the elementary principal who is in search of kids' books for our new theme, Choose to be Kind. Yes, our librarians are there for all of us.
Hi, my name's Lauren Nemovitz, and I'm the librarian at Slangerlands Elementary, and I want to tell you why we say there's no such thing as closing time at Bethlehem libraries. You probably remember, as a student in a library, a lot of you, I think, not the students that are currently here, but learning how to use a card catalog when you were growing up. I loved the card catalog, but because there's a card catalog, you had to physically be in the library. If the library was closed, you didn't get to use it. We are fortunate that we now, those days are over, and we have two online catalogs: Destiny for our print collection and Overdrive, which houses our digital collection. This is a screenshot of our Destiny program. I love Destiny. As you can see, you can still search by title, author, and subject like we used to, but this does hundreds of things more, and I could talk to you about it for two hours. I think I would be more excited about it than you would, so I'm going to show you two little things, how students can access this from home. This is just a screenshot of my info. You can see it's highlighted in orange up there. Students all, once they're logged into Destiny, can see what books they currently have checked out, regardless of whether they're at school or home. You can see I currently have five books checked out. If one of them was overdue, that would be highlighted in red so students can know. So, if they're home and they know their library days tomorrow, it's an easy way for them to check out, check to see which book to bring in. It also tells if there's a book on hold, which I currently have a hold that I'm waiting for. So, this is just one easy way where we can use Destiny. This is a little more involved. Students in the 5th grade were doing research on holidays around the world, and a student came in looking for a Hanukkah book. So, on this shot, it shows five Hanukkah books. Only four of them are currently checked out, zero of one available. One of the things that our Destiny program does, you can see I've got websites highlighted, so since there weren't very many books to choose from this particular day, we could go to websites. When the students are logged in, you can see that there's now 37 websites that have been pulled up. These have been vetted by experts so that I feel comfortable telling the students that you can use this, where I went into Google just to see how many would come up, and I got 28 million hits. Now, you know, students, when they find 28 million hits, are just going to go to the first 10. I feel so much better saying, "Here's 37 that I'm comfortable with." I don't know if you can, you probably can see up there. I have it filtered because this was a 5th grade student, so I chose grade level 3 through 5. So, it took out any of those middle school or high school-level websites so that they don't have to look through those as well. There's other filtering techniques on here. You could choose a source. Maybe you just want encyclopedia sources, or maybe you just want magazines. You could choose that. And related topics, if you wanted to, a more narrow topic, maybe just dreidels or a broad topic on Judaism in general, you could change the topic and get other websites. Once we teach this at the elementary level, they can use this in middle school and high schools as a great starting point to look for expert information on the web versus going to Google. I've moved over now. This is our digital online catalog. So, that was our print catalog that housed all of our books that were in our own libraries. The digital one, we all share through Bosse's. This one, I've pulled up the literature selection, and I've chose the middle grades, grades 4 through 8. I start teaching this to our 3rd grade students on how they can get a digital book from our collection, but it's been really great this year in the 4th and 5th grade, where our 4th and 5th graders all have Chromebooks. They bring them to the li- They bring them to the library, they're able to check out a book right onto their Chromebook, and it's already there for them. Then when they go back to their classroom, if they're working on a project in there and a particular student has already finished and still, students are still working, they can pull up this book they've checked out right on their computer. After that, if they haven't finished it, they can go home and they can continue reading at home on one of their devices there. We teach them how to read it right on their computer in their browser, and they can get it onto a device. It's a couple extra steps that, because I don't have those devices, I don't teach them in there, but it's a great way for them to be able to check out books when they're on break, over the summer, or in school. And this is just another page from the Overdrive catalog. This shows an account information. This is mine. You can see I have two books checked out. We like this a lot because after three weeks, the books go back to the library. They don't have to worry about returning them. There's no overdos. That was just my little part on how you can access our library 24/7. I'm going to turn this over to Pam. Thank you.
Hello, Pam Held. I'm the elementary librarian at Hammagrail and Glenmarch. And I'm just going to follow up a little bit with what Laura was talking about, that our online catalog is one of the databases that we use to teach students how to locate and comprehend information. We're fortunate that our district does invest in many databases to teach students from kindergarten through 12th grade. And these are just representative databases, a sampling of what's available to them. And you can see the, you could probably guess which ones would be the elementary, the ones that look fun and inviting, BookFlix and PebbleGo. So that would be for our youngest students. Up through middle school and high school would be the databases that are on the bottom row. And even J-Store, I understand, is really a college-level database that students in college would use, but our students have access to that as well. And I think the important thing to know, and Laura hit on this too, when she was talking about researching in Destiny and looking at these websites, is that, you know, it's really giving kids an idea that there are alternatives to using Google. I mean, it's great, you know, in a lot of ways, but in order to, you know, know that you're looking at accurate, reliable, and really age-appropriate information, these databases are really, very, very important to use and that they have access to. So this is one of the new databases that we have, PebbleGo. This is really for our youngest students, and really, if you look at the topics, animals, absolutely an elementary favorite. And even you're in the library and you see our collections, you know, the huge, the biggest section is animals. So, and we recently added Social Studies. So basically, students, and this could be, mostly I speak with first and second-grade teachers and, and use that with my first and second grade students, but they're really, kindergarten students could use it as well. But they basically would drill down. Let's see, this kind of shows you from that beginning screen how they can drill down to get to their information about the black bears. And there's also a feature that will have the text read to them as well. So it's very, very handy. And especially in light of the importance of nonfiction texts with our Common Core, teachers are always looking for, you know, other sources, good nonfiction sources. And so I'm always excited, I'm like, have you looked at PebbleGo yet? You have to see this. And so this is one of the searches that I'll show them, but I'm, you know, trying to give them ideas of what they can use with their students. And they can use it with iPads, you know, different devices, so. And the best way for students to become effective users of the databases is by instruction in the classroom, in the library. We collaborate with our teachers so that they can use it effectively in the classroom as well. And they can use these databases at home. And that leads me to really one of the best features of the database, our databases, is that they're available 24/7, 365 days a year, just like any parent out there that's available 24/7, 365 days, our databases are too. And so we invite parents and students to contact us with any questions they would have about using them at home. And also, you do need login, logins to use them at home. So we really invite anyone to contact us. So, thank you so much. Whoops, I forgot to advance one. Any questions? Sorry about that. So we opened this up now, time to, to anybody, any questions that anyone would have?
Okay. First of all, I'd like to say thank you very much, a good job.
I've got lots of questions. I write them down as I go.
Sure.
So, like, where are my colleagues? No, I want to drill you, Pam. No, I'm just kidding.
Okay, thank you.
How long have these online databases been in use?
I've been here for 10 years. This is my 11th year, and they've been available since I've been around, so I don't know.
So both Destiny and?
No, no, Destiny is new. Yeah. This is our second year with Destiny, but we have another, but this Destiny is definitely an improvement.
So how do kids that aren't currently instructed on Destiny, so let's say you're at the high school level and you're not getting that elementary, middle school, library time, is there a way that we inform the high schoolers on how to use this program?
So when English classes come in, this is something that you show them when they're doing research, but it is very comparable to the, to the program we had before, which is called Horizon. So any of the basic functions that they're doing mirrors that. So when they come in with English classes or Social Studies classes, I'll show them the additional features, but they do already have a basis. I had a class in today, and they were like, oh, yeah, this, we're just searching. It's, and it also mirrors the public library catalog, so they do have a basis for that.
So they don't need any special access, just by having their student ID and whatever login they can get in?
Yep.
And that goes to my second question. A librarian's job description has kind of changed and morphed over the years, where it's less reading to the kids in the, at the elementary level and the middle school level, and it's becoming more research-oriented. Like, how, and I guess you can each speak from your, your grade level, how your job kind of has changed? And do you have conflicts with the use of the library, with teachers all wanting to bring their students down, and things along those lines? Like, what, what works, what doesn't work?
You know, it's, it's definitely different. Part of it, though, is that there are, there are laptop carts now. And for us as librarians, we, we need to initially reach out to the teachers to make sure that they understand the difference between sitting a child in front of a device and a child having instruction and training on how best to use that device to access information. So, so that's, that's definitely different. But we try to, we, we try to sort of fold ourselves in as much as we can with the instruction process. And when teachers are coming down, for instance, with, with, in the middle school, we do National History Day, and Kristin Burns brings the students down on a, on a very, you know, strict schedule for instruction. And we cover a lot of different topics with them that Kristin just doesn't do. She doesn't have time to do them, and it's not her, it's not her specialty. So Janie and I, at the middle school recently, we taught students how to do thesis questions as part of their research. And we took ownership of the grading of those. We provided the rubric, you know, we, we graded that portion of their project. Tomorrow, we're, we're teaching them how to do annotated bibliographies. So, you know, it's, it's definitely more research-based, but at the same time, we still do a lot with trying to encourage kids to read, whether they're reading on a Kindle or a laptop or a print book. I mean, that's still a huge part of what we do, and it, the importance of it has not diminished.
I think at the elementary level, our schedules are fixed right there. So we definitely, from K through 5, see every class every week. And any of the openings, that's where we sometimes will fit in. You know, a first-grade teacher might say, we want to research animals this week, when can we come in? And we just look at our schedule in a piece, and we just try and fit them in and see if they can. We're usually very flexible. I think any librarian at any level, flexibility would be one thing that they'd say as part of their personality, because we just try and fit them in when they can. I know that's true for the elementary levels. I'm not sure how their scheduling is at the middle school and high school.
At the high school, we do only have one computer lab in the library, so we have had some issues when it comes to people wanting our help, and we are kind of split. So I push in occasionally. If they, I offer to come to their room, especially since they have Chromebooks, I will email them resources. And my schedule's a little tough because I'm between high school and elementary. We do have another full-time at the high school. So sometimes that librarian will be in the back, in the lab with the class, and then I will push into, to another class, so.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Joanne?
Okay. So Christine kind of talked about the, the evolution of really the research component and, and the, you know, different databases that are now sort of the sourced. One of the things I was kind of curious about is there's been a lot in the news about sort of fake news. And it's such a huge kind of national conversation right now. You know, kids are very avid internet users, and, you know, it made me start thinking about how, you know, many adults can't decipher what's fake news from real news as, you know, they, there's been a lot of stories about, you know, the influence on the election and so forth. But kids are definitely probably less able to decipher. Where does that sort of instruction belong? Is that with librarians as the keepers of the research development?
I want to say something a little bit about that. That we have recently had discussions about digital citizenship and, within our library area, and also on the computer committee as well. There are aspects of it that touch on digital citizenship. So I think we're just really trying to, you know, figure out, I mean, we do feel like we have ownership of some of that, evaluating information, you know, not plagiarizing citing sources. But where does that fit in with the rest of our curriculum with technology? So we really are trying to, you know, figure out really how much do we cover in the library. And I think teachers, we have to work collaboratively. I don't think we could do it all, obviously, in the library. So it's, you know, just really important that we can be more like change agents and, you know, to bring that all about and to be supportive of that. So, but we do feel like it is an important part of what we're doing. But, you know, where does our role end, and teachers and technology, you know, so we're just kind of evolving. So I hope that's like somewhat of an answer.
Yeah, well, and it's kind of a newer phenomenon in terms of its place. You know, there's always been kind of fake news, but now there's sort of malicious fake news. I mean, there probably always has been.
Yeah, and actually, in like, in a fourth-grade class, we were doing big note-taking and talking about plagiarizing, and, and the kids actually brought that up. You know, so what about fake news? You know, I'm like, here's the fourth graders, you know, talking about that topic. So it's definitely, they're aware of it.
Well, I would imagine, you know, talking to Dave Hurst over there, that faculty members also would hold students accountable to their sources. And, you know, I always tell my kid, ask my kids, what do you know and how do you know it? But I would imagine the faculty members are also assisting students to think about sources, facts, opinion, perspective.
It's a huge component of the curriculum, particularly in whenever students are doing research.
Yeah, no, I know. It's just become such a dominant kind of part of, and, and obviously, if you're using, you know, I didn't realize we had those kind of source databases that are the first filter. But that doesn't prevent a student from, you know, expanding their world to, you know, do further research or analysis on something. And, you know, and you can't always tell because sometimes it's sort of packaged as something that, you know, it's not, so. Thank you.
Okay, one more question. Do you find that the classroom teachers are utilizing you to the best of your ability? Or is there more training that needs to be done with what the classroom teachers can do maybe at the high school level more so? I think at the lower levels, you're more collaborative partners, and at the high school, there's a little more autonomy in teaching styles.
Yeah. One of the, I think one of the most valuable things that we do all year is when we present to the new teachers. Janie and I did that in the fall, you know, the new teachers have to do a series of educational things. And that's our, that's a really a first opportunity to sit down with them and show them some of these things that they just aren't aware of. I mean, A, Bethlehem has things that other districts don't have necessarily, so they wouldn't have any experience with it. Or if they're coming, you know, freshly out of school, they, they just tend to be exposed to it, and they don't know what sort of resource the library, the library can be for them. So, you know, that is, that's definitely something that we want to.
What about at the, at the high school level, the same type of model?
Yeah. Actually, we try really hard to make sure that we're, we're out and about and talking to everybody and trying to promote our different resources. I send a lot of emails. I walk the halls and pop my head in and say, hi, and how can I help you? What are you guys working on? I try to make them know that we're there, especially with, you know, the new initiative coming up with one-on-one. I want to make sure that they're aware that you don't need to be in the library for us to help you. We, we travel to you. We're available wherever you need us. So we're working, I'm working extra hard on that this year.
Do you think with the one-to-one Chromebooks, you're going to see uptick in how much help might be required now that they have availability during the day to utilize you a little more? And is that a concern at all, or no?
I think that if, you know, teachers are assigning them quality projects, you know, with, with rigorous demands, then they will come to us for assistance with that.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping that with that, then they look to us more for, for help with that kind of, that kind of thing.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes, Mike?
I don't have a question, but I just have a couple comments. First of all, I just want to thank you for instilling a love of reading in our students. There are so many demands on our children these days, from video games and television and everything else. And it warms my heart when I see a child opening a book and reading. So thank you for that. And thank you for teaching them research skills. As I said, in my line of work, I see oftentimes the lack of those kind of skills in many of the students who come through colleges right now. So thank you for doing that. And I just want to say that I hope people realize how lucky we are in this district, that we have these kinds of resources. I have some friends in another state who, their school district had to cut their entire library staff a few years ago because of budget cuts. So that the only time their school libraries are open are when they can get parents to volunteer to come in. And their materials are not being updated at all. And that's heartbreaking because the children do not have the materials they need in order to be, be educated. So, you know, in this season, I just think we all need to be thankful that we, we have these people here and the rest of our staff and the resources that we have.
Very true.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much again. Great job.
Thank you.
At this point, the Board of Education would recognize any visitors who would like to address the board on an agenda item. Is there anyone who would like to address this? Okay. Finance. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following Finance Action Items 1 through 3.
Second.
It's a first and a second. Any discussion? Any, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstention that carries? I would like to acknowledge the donations that we have there. So, thank you very much. And I have said this numerous times, and I always will say, we have a very supportive community, and without that additional support, a lot of items and activities wouldn't occur. So thank you. Professional personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel, Personnel Action Items 1 through 7.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion?
Can I just make a comment?
Yes.
I just want to acknowledge that we have some real titans who are about to retire. You know, the, it's a list, if you add up the number of years, it's also quite remarkable. But, you know, Mary Zach leaving Hammagrail is, is going to leave a real gap. She's just remarkable. You know, Ms. Hayna, I just can't believe she won't be at the middle school teaching science. And, you know, just lots of titans here, and what remarkable service to the district. And we will miss them. You know, really good, quality teachers we're losing.
They truly are, yes. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstention that item carries? Support Personnel Action Items. It is recommended that the Board of Education- It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through six.
Sub move.
First and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention that item carries? And also, we have some retirements under that, the support personnel, who have been here a very long time and very dedicated. Other action. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one through four.
Sub move.
Second.
First and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention that item carries? Recognition of visitors on a non-agenda item. Is there anyone who'd like to address the Board of Education on a non-agenda item? Okay. We're going to write a lot. PIG students picked a good meeting to come, meeting to come to. Future meetings. Our next meeting will be, let's see, Wednesday, January 4th, 6:00 PM anticipated executive session, 7:00 PM regular board meeting. That will be held at Slingerlands Elementary. After that, we have a, the next meeting after that is Wednesday, January 18th, again, 6:00 PM anticipated executive session with a 7:00 PM public meeting. That meeting will be held at Elsmere, Elsmere Elementary. We, on Tuesday, January 23rd, at 5:30 PM, there will be an audit committee meeting, room B-115 at the high school. And at 6:30 that evening, in the same room, will be the BCAU Process Committee meeting. The board is still finalizing the date of our winter retreat. We will let you know when we, when that occurs. On behalf of the board, again, we wish everybody a happy holiday season, be safe, and a happy New Year to everybody, and healthy and happy 2017. They have a motion to adjourn? There's no need for, to go into the session? First and second? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? We are adjourned. PIG students, please come up and sign out, and we'll sign your papers for you.